They got a lot of eggs. They had a lot of eggs. There is no old business. We have a couple items of new business. The first one being Resolution 2024-21. It's a resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of property from Newt Investments LLC to the city of Monticello, and Jim Barzick will speak on that.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. So I just wanted to, let me circle back a minute because both of these resolutions that we're going to talk about are referring to Innovation Parkway. And I know there's some new faces here. What happened is, over a decade ago, started planning a road to be adjacent to the old bus bar in the Hunneman building, going back along, in an east-west direction. So, you know, more than 10 years ago, before I was here, this was being planned. To do this road, we needed to acquire right-of-way from the adjacent property owners from it. So we first acquired the right-of-way from the school district late last year, and that's been done. These two resolutions in front of you today, complete land acquisition, to build the road within. They're significantly smaller than the school. In fact, the one for Newt Investments is just a couple hundred square feet. And through our know, we're going to basically get enough property to build the cul-de-sac within their property. So that's just kind of a broad stroke of what's going on. So these two resolutions are regarding the land acquisition, as I said, for the road that the council approved to be budgeted this year. And in fact, the contract, we should have the contract bid opening Wednesday. So we'll have, you'll be then subsequently hear about awarding the contract to the parent road bidder. So without further ado, Resolution, well, are there any questions about that? About the, just the general location of the road? I should have included a little map like I do when I do the the other things that I do for the planning and zoning board. It might have been helpful. I usually include like, oh, this is where it's at. I'll do that next time to make sure we got, I know where it's at, because I've been working on it for everybody else's benefit. Okay, so Resolution 2024 is a resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of property from Newt Investments LLC to the city of Monticello. As I said, the city's been planning this new access road from Illinois Route 105 to the Thu'arno property located west, behind the currently owned school district property occupied by the Illinois Bus Service. The only existing access to the Thu'arno property utilizes Monroe Street down past Willow Tree. And it's in some pretty bad repair. So this is going to change the whole access for them, where they can get trucks through there in a way safer manner. And in fact, it benefits the bus barn too, because they'll be able to get the buses in and out of there in a more efficient manner, instead of, it's kind of a mess right now when they're passing by. So the negotiated amount to acquire the real estate from Newt was $2,500. The real estate necessary to install infrastructure, pavement, curb, gutter, storm sewers, water main, and approaches to provide access to all the five adjacent properties to the new road, this typical expenditure was approved in this year's TIF 2 budget. The real property owned to be transferred by a sales contractor with Newt Investments and Illinois Corporation within the Monticello is legally described in that Exhibit A that I attached with this. So the contract for the sale of the real estate will be receiving the property after, should you approve this, we'll actually sign it tomorrow, the contract, and then we'll take it to the recorder's office and officially require the property and be ready to construct. So it's recommended that the city council discuss, direct the city administrator, Terry Summers, to execute the contract that I attached as Exhibit B, to purchase the property, the legal that was shown in Exhibit A at today's meeting.
Thank you, Jim. Questions or concerns, anyone?
Is this going to be something that's going to be available to the public in regards to buying that property? Are we going to be able to invest and have other storefronts around that, or is it just going to be a thoroughfare?
It'll be a road primarily that the adjacent property owners can access.
Does that know what's right around it? That's the only reason why I'm asking.
Say it again.
I know what's right there, so that's why I'm asking. Yeah, like, I mean...
But this is going to end in a cul-de-sac, which can be accessed by other properties if they sell them.
Good point. Okay.
To put the stuff in.
Yeah, it'll have a turnaround, like we did on Bear Park.
Okay.
But this is the road that goes in front of Willow Tree, over, back over there?
The road that goes in front of Willow Tree is actually a private road owned by the railroad that has easement given to them. But it's not adequate to take truck traffic down. You know, it's an old chip road, it's all those things. So to enhance that property back there, where they can add additional businesses and bring trucks back there, we need a I won't go and call it a commercial road, but a more commercial road to access the back property there. And the bus, you know, the bus to the north, and then the businesses along the south.
So I want to make sure I'm picturing this correctly. Is it like, as if you're turning into the bus parking lot? Is that becoming the road, or is it along the fence line there?
It's along the fence line. If you picture where the fence line's at, just for argument's sake, that'd be the center line of the road.
Got it. Okay. So between RP and the bus garage?
Other side.
There's more, more there. There's a, it used to be the old cable building.
Yeah, exactly.
Used to be an old cable building. It's just taken new ownership in the past.
Yeah.
I've heard it called the old Secretary of State lottery building, like all those different things. It's between the bus service and those things. And where that fence goes, that big security fence they have, it's basically that's going to be the element.
There's tons of land back there. It could be developed.
Could be developed.
No, it's much more enticing.
And this will encourage that to be developed, because it'll have, the access off of Monroe is really inadequate for trucks.
They do have a connection to the train tracks, right, which makes it an attractive property?
That's why they bought that far.
And their intention, through our know now, is to expand their business to be utilizing that spur. We're getting ready to build a tree and do all sorts of expansion back there.
If you drive, if you drive down by there now, the building that you were talking about, that used to be the lottery building or whatever you call it, they are currently in the process of pouring their concrete driveway, nice wide driveway. Our road will be just to the north of that, towards the bus barn. But that concrete's being poured there now is not ours, it's theirs. So we're going to construct a road just north of that.
And to a good point, and what will end up happening is they will then access off this new road. So you won't have a stack of entries to 105, and that makes it safer, because of all those other things that go along with that. It'll enhance that in their entry. And they planned that around what we were intending to do, and they were waiting as we got closer to finish their work.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Chair would entertain a motion for Resolution 2024-21 is presented.
Agreed.
Second?
Second.
We have the motion and a second.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-22, Jim spoke to it a second ago, and we'll just, we have to vote on both of them. So if you want to highlight any other part of that?
The only difference in this one is we're not having to spend any money to acquire the right-of-way. Thu'arno is giving it to us for no charge. So, again, but it'll be the same process where the council needs to give authority to Mr. Summers to sign the contract. We still drafted a contract, even though there's no money changing hands. So when we go to record it, there's actually a real estate contract to be executed. So in essence, it's recommended the city council will discuss and direct the city administrator to execute the contract as Exhibit B, to purchase the property shown in Exhibit A of this resolution at today's meeting.
Okay. Everybody realizes that is access to the same property we talked about previously. Chair would entertain a motion on 2024-22 is presented.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
We have the motion and a second.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Discussion update on the situation that we spoke to last meeting. Terry, you have information there?
So we discussed this in pretty good detail at the last city council meeting. I threw a lot at you. I think some of you might have had a little sticker shock. And I told you we were going back to the drawing boards, we were going to revise some things and see where we could come back to the council and give another update tonight. So during the budget discussions, we talked about getting a bond for $4 million. We talked about dipping into the reserves of $2 million. So there's that 6 million. And we talked about spending $700,000 from the business district reserve. So we have 6.7 million. That was approved during the budget. It's in the appropriation ordinance. So a couple of things to circle back to update. The enclosure design. They had designed several different options. We narrowed it down to three. Those came back to in the neighborhood of $2 million. We redesigned the enclosure and eliminated some of the glass. But it is still highly visible. It's got kind of the concrete masonry unit, split block face corners. That estimate came back, not 2 million, but 1 million. We talked about redesigning the master plan a little bit. So I think, Rodney, you may have mentioned, you don't, we won't need that plinth if this is, you know, at grade level in the enclosure. So they redesigned, took the plinth out, we eliminated some parking, we reduced the length of the path on, inside the park. The granite kind of columns that represent all the branches of the military, those are going to be made out of that CMU, concrete masonry unit with just a placard of, you name it, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, so on and so forth. So all of those has really reduced the site construction costs tremendously. Almost a million dollars off the construction. One of the other things we talked about, I was waiting to get a response from Adams. When we had to relocate the, when we had to put an enclosure and then relocate it from near the tree line out towards the road, there could have been some visibility issues with the billboard at Iron Horse Place. Just got a response from the manager at Adams. He does not feel it would be restricting their visibility. So apparently, we should be good to go with that. That's not an issue. I was waiting for transport, transportation from its storage location in Bethel, Connecticut to here. I received that late last week, and that's 25,000. I spoke to the owner, Rodney Hilton Brown. He agreed that he would extend the letter of intent. He wanted, asked for it by the end of March. And again, that was kind of discussed between Rodney and I in January, February. He agreed to extend it to the first meeting in April, April 8. So based on this evening's discussion, I've had our attorneys draft the letter of intent previously. Based upon tonight's discussion, I may send that to Rodney to get, you know, get his eyes on it. If there is any comments or revisions requested, and then get that to you the Wednesday before April 8's council meeting. So you have a chance to review it. Get ahold of me if you have any questions. So all of that being said and done, I feel with the redesign of Freedom Park and some revisions to Burke Park, they're both kind of lumped into that 6.7 million. One of the things we were talking about in staff, they budgeted, the engineers budgeted $1 million for the playground at Burke Park. We built Nick's Park, Public Works employees and volunteers, community volunteers. I think that was not quite $400,000. So inflation, I feel a million dollars is a little high if we do the construction and house, the build. The demolition of the basketball court and tennis courts, that can be done by Public Works. So I feel with everything said and done, I think we can get this, both parks constructed at or below the 6.7 million. Getting some things either phased, you know, if we need additional parking at Freedom Park, maybe our Public Works guys could pour, you know, some concrete for that. And then obviously, our Public Works doing some of the install. So that's the update I have. I did get some more information from our previous meeting. I was kind of excited that we're in, in the ballpark of that 6.7 million. I saw some jaws drop last, and rightfully so. And that was a lot of information to digest at the last meeting. So if you have any questions, discuss it amongst everybody.
Does that free up some money then? Because we talked about needing an enclosure for the statue and some extra costs for that. Does, are we still, if we go ahead and say we're going to do that part, we're going to spend that extra money, are we still going to be in the ballpark or below?
Yes. It would be, it would be my recommendation if we pursue this sculpture. And I should have mentioned, I spoke with Rodney, I don't, two or three times last week, and he did reduce the price from 1.25 million to 1 million, which was appreciated. Yeah, this, if we get that sculpture, I think it needs to be inside. It can't stay outside.
Right. But that's what we talked about before. That was going to be an extra expense.
Yeah, that's included in.
Yeah.
I have a question. So you talked about you were going to use granite for the different branches of the military, and now you're going to use the concrete. Will that require, like we talked before, will that require update, like repairs, because it will be open, right? That's not going to be covered, correct?
No. It's kind of like, it's kind of like what you see a lot of the retaining walls made out of, but it'll be squared off and then a cap on top, and then they'll just have a placard of the military branches on the face of it. It'll still have, still have the active-duty military signs installed. There's not steps and ramps and everything for the plaza. It's at grade. So, you know, you start picking away at these, you know, everything costs money. So I think the engineers took heed to sharpen the pencil.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, I did have, I know that we've talked about this, and I have one, I'm being here last meeting. At the Burke Park, is there going to be signage or something that will kind of tell his story?
Yeah.
That's...
Yeah, we, actually, we met with a sister of Robert C. Burke last week, and she brought in a photo album and we went through, it was a great, awesome meeting. And we got a lot of ideas from her photos to incorporate in that, in the plaza at Burke Park. So the thought, and it's always been this thought, there'll be kind of a plaza that your north-south sidewalks and east-west sidewalk, it goes to that plaza, and there would be a vertical something steel, some sort of vertical piece, and there'll be informational signage, you know, down below. And, you know, we got some, a lot of great ideas from that meeting.
Because I, I mean, I was born and raised here, and I knew we had a park named after him. It wasn't until two years ago, setting the scholarship thing, that I heard the story, and I'm like, holy cow, how am I hearing this for the first time?
Yeah.
This guy was amazing, like, so I wanted to make sure that everybody got to see.
And she had a, she had actually a picture, a framed picture that one of the, one of the Marines fighting next to Robert C. Burke actually drew a sketch. And Robert C. Burke was tasked to carry and fire the M60. So he, there's a sketch, you know, an M60 is a big, big gun. So she had somebody add some watercolor to it, so we may incorporate that into those, the informational signage, that's, you know, down below, easy to read. It was pretty cool.
Very cool. Is there any, I had thought about it before, is there any way, any thought of moving or getting ahold of LX, the new concrete 3D printing business out there? And see if they'll be part of it, or, I mean, I guess it is for bids, that's a different situation, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what they would do. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the extent of what they could do.
It would be kind of neat, like whoever the contractor is would subcontract them to do some of the work.
That it, Terry? Anybody else? I will say, as an alderman, I do not get many calls in my ward. The situation with the memorial has generated three calls to me in the past several days. All of them from older people. I am not a reader of the local newspaper. I don't subscribe. So I don't know whether the money situation was published in the paper, were any figures published about any of this. Couple of them seem to be fairly knowledgeable about the money. I'm not sure where that came from. But that being said, they were very concerned about multimillion-dollar price tags. That we were running on a deficit budget already, and spending $5 or $6 million on this situation. Two of them very concerned about that money could be spent on infrastructure rather than something like that. They're not at all opposed to recognizing the veterans. We talked about that. That didn't come up. But they just felt like, when you're talking about $5 or $6 million, that was a chunk to them. They thought, I don't want, you know, we're going to talk about it again, but I don't want us to be put in the position with the purchase of the statue to be buying somewhat of a white elephant. Because it came up, it came up to be sold apparently some time ago, and Because it, it came up, it came up to be sold apparently some time ago and was, you know, there was an auction for it and he couldn't get the price above $950,000 and the auction stopped. Because he wasn't going to accept that. Well, now if we're on the, if we're looking at it and saying, oh, we'll pay a million. He's, he's got a better go, you know, but I don't want to be buying somebody's white elephant. Just it's the opportunity for him to get rid of it, quote unquote. I don't know how many other people he's got standing in line to buy it. I have no idea. But anyway, I will tell you that it has generated some interest and of the three calls I got, they were not in favor of spending multimillion dollars to purchase it and house it and put it on display. See, see where it goes.
I think, I think, and I think there's, there's been a couple that have, I have heard from. And, you know, we, we have, of the $4 million bond, we have that funded. That is funded from the business district in the TIF. Right? There's not, there's, we have the funding in place. And we're not depleting those funds in the business district or TIF. There will still be the building improvement grants. We're not, we're not depleting those. And infrastructure. Man, it's a balancing act. There's quality of life amenities and there's definitely infrastructure. And we've spent, this year, we're going to do Grant Street in Buchanan to a little over a million dollars. Since 2016 or 17, we're somewhere in, in over $5 million in roads. So that, I, I hope, you know, you know, sometimes they forget how bad State Street was and how bad Bridge Street was.
Sure.
Because it's, it's fairly smooth now and we oftentimes forget that overnight. But hopefully you can tell your constituents, you know, there's five, $6 million in roads. So we're, we're definitely paying attention to the infrastructure. So the $4 million, we've identified the funding mechanism for that. Your property taxes aren't going to be affected at all. And the treasurer's report at the end of 2023, and we talked about this in pretty great detail late last year and earlier this year, but it's, there's $10.3 million in reserves, there, thereabouts. So, you know, and realize that our operating budget from 2015 to 2022 ranged from, from 3.8 million to 5.6 million. So four to six million is, is our operating. And we have, you know, a year and a half of operating in reserves. And most communities, if they have half a year in reserves, they're counting their blessings. So I think we've paid attention to the infrastructure. Please pass that along or give them my phone number. Definitely paying attention to the infrastructure and I think our reserves show a lot of fiscal responsibility from this council and previous councils. So y'all ought to feel good about yourself. I'm serious. And to get, you know, two amenities like this. I mean, Robert C. Burke, and, and I could tell you, it, it's going to be renamed from what, what his sister was talking about, still Robert C. Burke, but those are big accomplishments. And getting a 1.2 miles of bike and hike trail extension is a great accomplishment. So pat yourselves on the back.
Yeah, well, I think.
And tell the constituents.
I think their bottom, their bottom consideration was for that, for that kind of money, they just told me, said, isn't there something else we could do with that kind of money? And I said, well, we'll discuss it. And then I just left it at that. I said, let us talk about it. But that, like I said, I don't get a lot of phone calls, but that particular thing has raised a couple, three phone calls in the past couple of weeks. And I, I can't say I was surprised. I didn't know. I wasn't really thinking about it. But it's, it's something to consider. And I know we're good shape money wise. I'm, we're not broke. We used to have a council member that said we were broke all the time. We're not broke. So I, it's just something to present. And I, I told him we would discuss it and, and we'd try and make the best decision that we could and we left it at that.
Go back and say that Terry came in with half the cost of.
Yeah, the costs are reduced and, and that's great, you know, I, that's great. And we need to, we need to make every effort that we can to make it a little less, you know?
And the other thing to keep in mind though, is this is honoring our past. And that, that we do call ourselves a unique community and these things are unique and should be honored and not forgotten.
Sure.
Very cool.
We, we have a tie.
Value to that, that is.
We have a definite tie to the, to the statue and to the presentation right here in this community. And I think that's, you know, that's a big thing, thing to consider.
And with the reconsideration, consideration of the budget, beautification of this town is one. Infrastructure's two, but like you said, there is money there to go ahead and fix that. And it's probably in a forecast of the future of which roads you're going to do. And we're going to fix all that at one point. I mean, but that we wrote down during this budget. Going. This is an investment, that is an investment that we're going to get back.
Yeah.
In terms, it's going to draw people, it's going to draw people to town. We're going to be able to get the taxes for that. And people that live here, the park itself beyond the recognition, there's some huge improvements to quality of life. This is, this is.
Yeah, they were, they were very much, I spoke to them about, they were very much in favor of the Burke Park situation, very much. That for all of that, but they, they were concerned about the statue situation. So anyway, and any of you, having been there for a long time, any of you'd have the opportunity to stop by the courthouse Monday through Friday. PFC Burke's entire situation, including his Medal of Honor, is on display in the showcases at the south end of courthouse. So the explanation of what he did, why he was awarded the medal, his letters that were signed with the president and all that, that's in a showcase there. So if you have the opportunity to stop by, it takes just a few minutes to read through it and look at it. But it's, it's very emotional.
And I like the idea of, we have a park here, a lot of kids run around, they're going to be intrigued and read some stuff too.
Sure.
They don't want to go out of their way. It's, you know, on the way to the basketball court.
Sure. If you get a chance, take a look at it, take a look. Any other, anything else?
Can I say something?
Yes.
My name is Bob Zimmerman. I live here in Monticello. And you say the million dollars for that statue? That's, as a taxpayer and I'm all for veterans. I'm all for having a veterans park in a park. A million dollars for that statue is, I don't see it to benefit, that it'll help anybody. Most people don't know this, a lot of these veterans are. And, you know, there's got to be some way to save and combine the park, make it Burke's Veterans Free Park or something, you know? Say, we're going to spend a million dollars and have to pay a lot to get it here, trying to figure out how to try to bring it back up to speed. I don't know. I don't know if it's in that great a shape where it needs fixed. So we just, you know, you're going to have a lot of people in town will say, our water bill got raised, our water bill got raised again. Taxes do go up. We're paying a lot for grocery. We're paying for this, we're paying for that. You got to, you have to go buy it too. So where do we draw the line on spending our money?
Thank you for your concern.
You know what I'm saying? You can have a park, a lot of towns have veterans parks and have plaques and things like that. You don't have spend nothing, $2 million, a million just for a statue that like says. Sale's stopping at 950. Nothing wants to spend that kind of money on it. But we're just going to cough up the money for it. Think it should be here in town? And I think the money can be better spent on so many things, law enforcement, fire department.
But see, that's one thing that maybe not, I don't think has been understood. We spend well on law enforcement. We spend well, no, wait a minute, we spend well on fire. We spend well on a lot of things.
I agree. I think you're right.
So is there a possibility that down the road, when you see the park and you see the statue that has a tie to this city here? Is that a possibility that, that maybe a plaque somewhere is not as important as this whole big thing?
I guess it could be different, but, but, you know, I think you could have a nice park, a nice, nice park.
We'll have that too.
Veterans, first, you know, first responders, everybody.
Yeah.
You know, honor all of them. It seems like this is just going a little high and maybe, you know.
Mr. Zimmerman, thank you for your input. We did allow you to speak without signing up. So please, I appreciate that. That's not a problem. Any other comments, questions or comments from anyone? Okay, we're going to start with the aldermen's reports then, go from this end to wrap. Anybody? Cole, anything from you?
Sir.
Ryan?
Nothing.
Wanted to give a reminder that on Wednesday morning, State Street will be blocked from Township Road to Home Beach. So that we can conduct the reunification Bement School District and area first responders. Chief Ross is going to work with Monticello, City of Monticello to get the barricades and signage up. Our hope is that we will leave Bement at 8:45, arrive at the church around 9 o'clock. And then once we are at the church, account for all of our students, then we will send a notification out to parents that they can come pick up their children. So we are, we've worked with Forest Preserve Park, that that's where parents will park coming in off of 105. We're blocking State Street so that parents can cross from the park to the church. And then our hope is that by 11:30, we have everyone picked up who's going to be picked up. All the barricades are taken down and nobody will be the wiser. There will be sirens in Bement. I don't know that there will be in Monticello, but there will be law enforcement, fire, paramedics present, but there should not be sirens in Monticello.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please be mindful of the traffic flow situation and, and if you have people questioning what's going on, I'll be able to answer quickly without bothering them.
My cell phone number on the city website if they want to get a call.
Yeah, go to the website. Right. Anything?
Me, yes. So don't forget about the Bunny Express on the 20, on the 30th and 31st. I'm going to have to throw eggs. But anyway, so that's, that's a plus. And then two, 629 East West Washington, thank you. Combs and everything out there taking care of that. But then there's another house, 621 Washington. That tree fell on that house a long time ago and they still haven't fixed it and it looks wrong. I mean, coming into town, it should be proper. So there's that. And then happy Easter.
To you too. Mike?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing. Chief? You?
Just real quick, I had a good hour long meeting with mental health today, Tony Kirkman's, and I've kind of been working to come up with a few other options for some that are facing maybe some drug or alcohol usage. That came in on a call I had. Tony was a very big help in that. So we are looking for other ways that we can kind of work together, go forward. And then same thing as with what Ms. Vog said, pretty much just, we're going to have some signs out. I think we're sending barricades out tomorrow afternoon, just to get ahead of this a little bit. We have some signage that's up. We'll put something out on Facebook tomorrow and first thing Wednesday morning. And then once when it's concluded, just so everyone has an idea. And for our part of it, what anyone's going to see is going to be the public works vehicles closer to the church and reunification area. It's going to be police and fire setting up incident commands, so.
Terry, anything?
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing? Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to be seated as pro temp in the mayor's absence. I think he's back next meeting, so we should be good. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Have the motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close or adjourn?